...in assisted living, for assisted living care and for memory care on the facility. This would be for the 405 address adjacent to currently what is there is the Pizza Hut. So this request is changing from an R1 to an R3 to get multifamily. Our objective is to put an assisted living care in that facility, on that land.
Okay. Do me a favor, will you please?
Yes.
And state your name so that we have it recorded by...
Okay. I'm sorry.
I know you're signed in, but if...
Okay. Patrick Morgan.
Patrick, thank you.
Okay. With Sloggy Architects.
Okay.
Okay.
Proceed.
All right. So that was the, that's a consideration. That's why we're going for that. So in order to put in assisted living, code states that if you're having multifamily, you can't do it as an R1 even though they're individual apartments. It has to be an R3. The same thing for the lot to the north, which would be the 306 South 25th Street. That intention there is although it is down the road, what is up on the, what is up on the board right now is for the address at 404 South 25th Street. And then what is up on the screen right now is for the 306 South 25th Street. The northern lot, right now, programming wise and working with the city, the intent is not to just, we didn't want to come in with just a big open field and just say, hey, give us an R3. Our early studies show us that if, if we decide to move forward with this, or when we decide, not our main objective, our main objective for this hearing is truly the assisted living. But down the road, we're finding some information of to have townhomes, and those townhomes would not exceed two stories in height, some of which will be fully accessible. So that is the lot that is to the north. Okay. Are there any questions from the mayor or the council?
So your primary objective is, is actually starting out, as you stated, with the assisted living, which is in the southern portion there.
Correct.
As indicated. And ultimately, was I catching that you were doing this as a planned unit development ultimately?
We're doing it as a planned development, the planned development, two things. It, it gives us, we can outline our vision for it, and it also actually protects the city and I think the adjacent neighbors. What you had just voted on previously, and I can use as an example, the planned development also states that our planned development will have certain easements, accesses, things of that nature for both of the properties. So our intent is to move forward on this. The planned development also allows us to put up a small billboard. It allows us to do some shared parking or shared drive access. So planned development makes sense to do it this way rather than an individual project. And we feel as though as the development, we can work closer with the city, get the intent as to what the city engineers are guiding us somewhat to do. And so the planned development made the most sense.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
How many units involved with the entire...
Right now, we're projecting around 84 units, and that does include the memory care.
A lot of the neighbors have mentioned the water flow that comes down that hill and fills in that field. Have you taken precautions to make sure that water keeps flowing and doesn't pool up down there and back up and do different things?
Certainly. We haven't, in all honesty, we haven't fully done all the engineering, but the beauty of the code is anything that we develop cannot hinder any adjacent neighborhood. So how do we take care of the water that's coming down onto our property? Well, I certainly can ask the neighbors who are uphill to stop having their drainage come down on us. We understand that the worst case scenario, all the water that, that comes from the residents to the north is coming onto this property. We will engineer it, we will design it, we will take care of it, we will mitigate it. Because this is a parcel of land that has been undeveloped, in my architectural experience, this will be a better development than what is there now. We're going to control it. So we have to design both of these lots to take a worst case scenario, sort of a hundred year floodplain, how much water will be coming onto our site? We have to control it, we have to detain it, we have to put it back into the city's system, some of which it deals with pervious and impervious areas. And we're, and we're sensitive to that. So we will fully address that and work with the city and comply to all laws that, that we need to.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And at, at what point in the process would we then be able to see the plans for that drainage?
You would be able to see that when we go for the final planning approval. We received preliminary approval, but before we get final approval, we will need to have grading, we will need to show how we're handling our detention. And I, and I think that answers your question, I hope.
I believe it does. Yes, thank you.
Yep. You're welcome.
I've got a question. This is going to be mainly for Dennis. You know, is there any concern in this area with like, say, hydraulic pressure causing, you know, developments in the outline area to have some sort of wicking happening in their basements if, if we do, because it was a wetlands at one time? I mean, not so much the drainage, but what, what water is there now? Where's that going to go? Is it going to spread, you know?
Those are some of the challenges that we're, that we'll review as we see the grading and drainage plan that will be prepared on behalf of Zella for this area. There is, you know, I think you'll hear testimony talking about groundwater issues and some of those concerns, and I think we have to be careful, the developer will have to be careful and deal with those things as they develop their grading and drainage plan on this site.
Could you foresee any issue with the homes that are adjacent to it with the, with that pressure causing wicking in their basements where the water could rise up? The table would, or you think that, I mean, we've had some similar developments and similar situations and along that way, you know? And I know just to take care of some of the issues on, you know, just basically the east of there, you know, on another development, just the way the ground was laid, you know, using gravel and soil and topsoil to make sure of the, because we were going, there was going to be issues with wicking just because of the nature of the beast and the way that ground laid. I don't know if that'd be an issue too.
I think the issues with the wicking, my experience has been is that they have been more related to the, what you're trying to do on the new development. You know, we tried to build fill for Pazwalk Avenue and put the fill in in the wintertime and came back in the spring and the water had sucked up through there. So they put some sand layers in there to stop that wicking from the bottom up. I'm not sure, your question was what impact it might have on the adjacent or outline areas, and I, I don't have a lot of experience with that, and it would most certainly be something that, I think I've mentioned that previously that, you know...
You think it'd be prudent to have a study done prior to us approving R3 going in there to know that that's something that's not going to cause problems throughout line areas?
I think maybe, how this thing should probably progress from my vantage point is, is that the developer needs some assurance that if he goes and spends the engineering dollars, that this is a project that will be acceptable to the mayor and city council. They're asking for zoning changes. If you, if you've looked at the, at the recommendations, is there recommended pass them on first reading only? Also, the, the item, action items related to the planned developments are preliminary planned developments. If those are approved, that gives the developer some comfort that, yes, this is a project that is acceptable in this area if I can deal with the issues that are, are outstanding. And primarily, I think those issues are going to be drainage related. And maybe after you hear the testimony, you might have some, some other issues that you've got some concerns that you're going to ask the developer to work on. Staff has asked, and the planning commission subcommittee has asked the developer to provide grading and drainage plans before they will consider the final plan development. It's a four-step process. Planning commission has a hearing in preliminary plan approval, council preliminary plan approval, planning commission final plan approval for a plan development, and then there's a hearing and the final before the city council. So we, the developer had asked to have the final plan on the planning commission agenda in the morning. We've identified that there's some more information that's needed before we can move forward with that final plan. I think more, Patrick had alluded to that in his, his testimony here that, that they know they have to do that. So seems prudent to tell them that, yeah, we're okay with R3 in your preliminary plan so that they have some feeling that it's good to move forward.
I don't think it's a question of drainage, you know, like, you know, the, obviously the grading and drainage, how it's going to come out of there. I mean, just like you stated, code prohibits you from pushing water on these individuals.
That is correct.
It's all going to be taken away.
Right.
And so, I mean, that, it's even gotten more stringent with new EPA guidelines.
Yes, sir.
So I mean, obviously, that's not going to be a major, they will engineer this plan to get the water away from your homes. It's just my question would be, is the hydraulic study, see what kind of, if any, we'd have any residual effect of putting a, that big a prop building on that area that traditionally years ago was swamp area, you know, that, and we've done it in the past. I mean, you started with the mall, you know? That went in there, then you had all that area was low lying area, we built over top of it, but is that a concern? Is that something we've got to worry about so these individuals don't have to worry about water coming up through their basement even after you get the drainage moving away? And it's not a drainage issue, it's more a wicking issue? And I don't know how you answer that question, I'm not an engineer, but just know that that could be an issue moving forward. It's something that needs to be addressed and answered before you can...
But how do we know that? I have no idea.
Yeah, it's a study done.
Yeah, the study...
There are hydrologists and geologists that, that understand how that, putting fill on here will have impacts, you know? So this is one that, that, I think the study needs to involve both surface water and some study on the underground, what impact it'll have on the groundwater levels in underground.
Dennis, at, at the end of the day, doesn't the statute say that it can't be any less than what it already is in terms of, of how it affects the neighbors? That there's a certain amount of drainage over there right now and hydraulic pressure?
It's clear that you can't run additional surface water onto your neighbor, or if you've got water coming, surface water coming to you, you have to provide for conveyance for that moving through. I think that, I haven't done a lot of research on the groundwater question that you are posing, so that's probably more what it's going to take to get the elected officials comfortable to approve the planned development.
So more, the study would be more unique to this project than the statute currently calls for?
Then what is required by the code? Yes, it would.
Yes, thank you. Better, better put.
That is correct.
All right.
And I guess I would ask the question, I know that in the last two years, you, you widened its street improvements for 25th Street, which of course, we all know that the water comes up in a sort of a northwest and it cuts down into that. And with the added, because there was a widening to 25th Street, correct? I mean, did that impose, you know, there's a whole impervious area that you're controlling it with drain? Did the city go about and do hydrology tests to how it affected the neighbors? I was just, I'm just curious, is there a precedent set for every time there's new development to do a hydrology? I'm not saying that we won't do it, I'm just saying, you know, how does development move forward? You know, we have a, we have a legal and sort of moral responsibility, you know, to make improvements to the city and not create problems for the city. And that's certainly something that Zella Heritage, they do throughout Nebraska, Iowa, Arizona, in their assisted living development. So I'd like you to consider that.
Question about process. If the zoning change were approved tonight, these studies are then conducted in terms of drainage and hydraulics, then a decision has to be made on the pla, on approval of plan development. Is that correct in terms of process?
I think on the process is, is you would consider the zoning changes on first reading only. You would, you would make the assumption that if you've approved it on first reading, that we're going to move forward with the additional readings and therefore approve the plan development if it meets your agreeance. And then we would get those dovetailed so that the final reading on the zoning and the final on the planned development would occur at the same city council meeting. Now, the second reading on the zoning could occur at the next meeting regardless of where they're at with the final plat process or final, final planned development process. It's the, you've got to make sure that the final third reading and the final planned development come together at the same time, even if that means that we have to table third reading on the zoning changes somewhere along the line.
And Dennis, when you're talking about that, that context there, you're also talking about, just to be clear, aren't, are you also talking about considering the comprehensive client plan change ordinance on first reading as well?
I think that that would be a prudent thing to do as well.
And so if, if all of that moved along expeditiously, as I look at this calendar, this is going back, if, if, if the plan development gets the final, or the, the preliminary plan development gets the approval here, that would next go to the planning commission on Tuesday, October 6th, correct?
That's when I, I think that's the earliest that it could be considered.
And so what we would anticipate then would be the, if, if you, if the council were to approve the comprehensive plan ordinance and the zoning ordinance, those would be back in the normal course on your agenda here on October 5th. On the 6th, you get the planning commission having all the drainage stuff and making a recommendation on the final, dealing with a, with a final plan development. And then all of those things, the zoning, the, the comprehensive plan ordinance, the zoning ordinance, and the final approval of the preliminary, or the planned development could come back before this council on October 19th.
That's the, if all the stars align up and, and...
If we can complete the...
And Zella are able to complete the drainage...
Correct. Within that time.
Within that timeframe.
And then the, the key to it though, as Dennis says, is if for some reason the final plan wasn't ready, the other ones could be held up so that all three of those things in any event come back before this council at the same time so that you're considering them all.
I would agree, and speaking on behalf of the developer, it makes sense to, let's push these all along together, and if there is a delay on one parcel, then we should delay the others and go in all at the same time. I, I think that's a fair approach. You know, our, my last conversation, when I was notified that the planning department for our final, that they needed additional information, we talked about what they're looking for, you know? They, they want to see detention, how we're handling that, they want to see how we're handling grading on both particular parcels. For full disclosure, the northern parcel, again, something that may be developed five years from now with the townhouses, that will be speculative based on those buildings. I, with probably 95% confidence, I can tell you the plan you're looking up on the board as far as the assisted living, that's generally the size and shape and what we're going for. The northern property closest to the residents, that's, that's the placeholder. It truly is, but we'll design it. But again, we have to design any grading and detention for a worst case scenario on that site, because if that R3 gets approved and we develop, let's say, bigger buildings in more impervious areas, then that creates more problem for the assisted living. So we of course need to design it for that.
Any other questions? Patrick's here before us. Any? Okay.
Good.
Thank you. Glad to have you here.
Thank you.
Okay. This is a public hearing, and who would like to come forward and speak to? Again, we will ask you, sir, that you state your name for us and sign in.
I've already signed in earlier.
Great. If you'll just speak your name.
Mayor and city council.
Your name for us, sir, please. Your name, just state your name.
I'm Rod Hughes.
Thank you.
I live at 2514 West Side Avenue.
Thank you.
Which is on the north side of the street, on West Side. The house is across the street from me, border into this property and their backyard. I spoke with the planning commission a week ago. I expressed my concerns then, and my concerns have not lessened any. I told the planning commission that I thought this was a undesirable area for such a development because 24/7, the trucks rumble on that 275 out there on that highway. And when they realize the light's going to change, the brake brakes come on. That's a pleasant sound of about 2:00 in the morning, it'll just bring you right out of your bed. The other thing that is bad about that area is about 2:00 in the morning, there will be a helicopter on an emergency run to Omaha. It comes right over the house, right over that area, chopping away, and very necessary. But it is also a very annoying noise. The rescue units, emergency units, all use those streets, 275 and Norfolk Avenue. You know, the, the, most of our rescue calls come from the, the north, the south and the east. We do have some come in from the west on 275. Those, they come and go, and we really don't hear them too much at my property, but you can. Being a senior citizen, I would hope that they, when my kids find a home for me like this, that they find one with a, that may be a little bit more peaceful. I said that they, the area, you know, there's many area in Norfolk that are, that is undeveloped that would make ideal, where there is some peace, some tranquility for the senior citizens. And this area could be utilized some other way. I talked to the city administrator after the public hearing, and he said, well, there could be worse things. Well, without all the problems that you just mentioned here, probably, you know, they would come back to haunt you again. In the late eighties, long about 86, 87, one of the city councilmen, his name was Steve Holtman, transferred with the NRD, I believe it was, to Omaha. I was appointed to take his position. He lived on the east end of West Side Avenue, as I remember, and of course, I lived at where I was at at that time. This was one of the issues, the drainage in this area that has been mentioned already that brought me to the council and was on my agenda most of the time. Mr. Smith can testify to that, I'm sure he remembers some of that. But I can't, there's been some improvement out in that area. There's been a lot of development, but the drainage, when you go north, from the top of the hill and south to the river, you get down on that bottom, you get down on that level elevation, it does soak to the south to the river. East and west of there is almost 12. If you take a look at the city drainage and holding retaining area, just west of 18th Street, south of Pazwalk, that area carries water most of the time. It is dry right now because we've been quite a while in some nice warm temperatures, so it is dry right now. The area on the east end of, on the south end of this development, right at the corner where Pizza Hut is, right now has water in it. The area south, going west from the hospital, on the north side of Norfolk Avenue, carries water 24/7 year round. I have never seen it dry. I chucked at it just a few minutes before I came here, got water in it. They did mow the weeds in it this week, so it looks a little better, but it carries water. The holding pond on the north side of 275, that we, when that development went in out there west of the hospital, the holding water on in between 275 and Roche Avenue, it never dries up. However, the holding areas on north of Kinnigstein, they will, they are dry, as a matter of fact, they put up the hay in them this year. The area on the south side of 275 is a disaster. East of Green Line Equipment Company to approximately 31st Street, there's an area in there that of course is a wetland. It never drains, never dries up. The ditches are completely full of trees, brush, debris, and that leads around to the north end of the 25th Street drainage canal. It does not drain into the canal, hasn't, never. Only the overflow. This has always been a mystery to us, why this area was, this money was spent and the area couldn't go down. Well, it's very easy to understand. You've got to mitigate wetlands in order to do, to drain them, and that's what would happen. The owners of the property, who I do not know who owns the property, all the property out in that area, they are able to harvest somewhat of a crop off of it, but very limited. Now, so all this water out of these normal range, an inch, inch and a half, two inches, flows under 275 and right into the corner of this area. It goes in an open ditch for a short distance, and then enters a sewer, or stormwater pipe that goes under Pizza Hut parking lot. Then it becomes an open drainage area till it gets down to the holding area that I was talked about at, on the, on the south side of Pazwalk. The same water then enters into Corporation Gulch, about 17th Street, right there, straight east. You probably know where it enters in at, and it goes to the southeast of First and Elkhorn Does pretty good till it gets to the railroad. And then when it crosses Monroe Avenue, you're back into a Marshall wetland. I worked at it a few days ago, hasn't changed any in all these years. Don Alrick, a contractor here in town, tried to open a channel through it, and he was successful in getting a nice channel through there, but now that is starting to fill back in. You get down to the Elkhorn River, it'd be, you're just coming out of a big area right down into a very narrow funnel. It doesn't promote good drainage, it doesn't help us in, in running east and west to the southeast, there is no soap, very little. And so we, I guess, you know, I could ramble on a long time about all these things, but I...
I think...
It's important that you understand where the problem is with us, because everything from the northwest of us comes down into this area, because it can't go down the 25th Street channel. Or is not allowed to, as far as I know. This is private property, I was to it many a time when I worked with the county and things, but I haven't been there for a while. But when you go down to 25th and Omaha Avenue, the channel and holding areas down there are dry. The water's not getting down there. Now, it's funny, that's where you'd think the aquifer would take it down there, but it don't. The area there that they want to develop, the water is just below the surface. You could take a post pole, very easy with a shovel or sticker and hit water. When you get, and I give a copy of this report that was given to me by a friend, concerned citizen, I want to have made the one copy, I didn't, it is a hydrology study. It was dated, I believe, as I read it in 2014. It recommends that this area stay a green area, recommends it stays R1, but... R1, but mainly it recommends that it stay a green area. It says that there is about seven acres in this area. It also points out that there's 1.7 acres of wetland in the southeast corner next to, north of Pizza Hut. Now, I, I'm not the numbers and things. If anybody wants it, it's on the internet, and you can pick that up. I, the level of their backyards of my neighbors on the south side, comes right out on the same plane as, as this open field is. So when you start building up, to which you have to put fill in, if you put in a holding pond, it'll never drain out if it's below the level of that water. So it just sits there. That's where we get these frog ponds that we have created. If you take a look at where Norfolk Avenue swings around and goes on to 275, when you wanna, or you come off of 275 on the Norfolk Avenue, them corners, nothing but wetlands.
Mr. Hughes, you know, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I do believe that certainly you've expressed the concern. And counsel, as we listen to him, does anyone have any specific questions? Because what I'm hearing you say is the city of Norfolk seems to have some issues with wetland. But I do believe that as the planning commission, and as certainly your city council, our responsibility is to make sure that a developer is going to make right. Now, whether or not he's able to do that, I think that's all, you know, what we're looking at as far as his choice of the property is certainly to be made by him. But the council and the planning commission certainly takes very firm interest in how it's going to affect any and all.
The developer has the control of the property he owns. I know that. He has no control of anybody else's property. But he cannot back water up onto somebody else. He can't dam the water up. And that is the problem of damming this water up. Now, for thirty years, this problem's set there, has not been addressed. That is why, it was my request, that I asked that a committee of councilmen, city staff, and concerned citizens and developers be allowed to study this, come up with a solution. So I, I see that my efforts are drawing the same attention they did thirty years ago, Mayor. I'm sorry to bother your time, but I will grant you that these people back here are serious. The people that just walked out are serious. We have a water problem, and it need, and after all these years, all the comprehensive studies that I sit through when I was on the council, recommended that this stay a green area and an R1. And now, with no discussion at the planning committee, they change it. They recommend that it be changed. I, no discussion. They asked me no questions. They had nothing, 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 and, and it fell on deep ears. Now, something has to change. This development is, I'm not against development. I'm just saying that we have to take care of the problems. You don't want to hear the problems? I'm sorry. I think that's what I'm hearing.
I don't, I, I believe we have heard you. And I think-
This is a public hearing, ma'am.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I argued this with, with Mr. Whittner's predecessor. And I argued it with several mayors. Mayor Maldus was very tough on-
The last thing we want to do is cause concern to anyone in that neighborhood.
What do you want me to do?
You've expressed your concern-
Want me to shut up and sit down, don't you?
I want anyone else to have opportunity to speak to. And I do think there's others that might be here that would like to have the floor as well.
Ms. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I, I have sat in public hearings with this council till two o'clock in the morning to hear all the testimony.
And that's great.
I still ask you to consider my request that a committee be formed before you make a decision on changing this, to see if it is feasible, see if it is, you know, the developer. I see, that's my request, that a committee be appointed. Now, I can't, you know, I can't stand up here and ask for that without saying yes. I will sit on such a committee, you know, if I'm asked to. I've spent a lot of time working on this, and so I will, I will make myself available.
This council has heard you-
I'm tired now, and so that, and-
Go ahead. Councilman?
Question for you, Mr. Hughes. I'm assuming this list of questions I was laying on my desk here or in my seating area, you prepared that?
I prepared that one, the one that's signed.
Okay. And this, this is signed by you. You might need to take the microphone, because I got a couple of specific questions to ask you on it. It says, will the trees that Mr. and Mrs. Springfield planted as a buffer remain? Are they on Mr. and Mrs. Springfield's property? Or are they on the property being discussed?
The Springfield's had their home just west of Twenty-Fifth Street, I think it was the third house, and they own this property. Tom Springfield passed away several years ago, and his wife, Virginia, moved with her daughter, I believe, to Oklahoma, and we have not, we have asked what the status of her, what she maybe has maybe passed on. She'd be very eldritch, yes.
Again, that, really, the point of my question is, are they on the property that's being considered for development, or are they on somebody's personal property other than what's being considered for development?
The trees.
The trees.
I don't, I don't, what, who, who's on? I don't quite understand your-
The trees are on the property that is being considered for development.
Okay. That being said, they, they go, the trees are part of the property.
They go with the property.
They go with the property, so it's really a mute question in my mind that way. The other question that I saw here, too, will the lane to the backyard of the residential lots remain? Again, I'm assuming that lane, from what I observed down there, appears to be on the property in consideration.
It is on the property that is under contract by Zella, but there is a twenty-foot ingress-egress easement for a lane immediately south of the lots along West Side.
Okay. And that was easements that you were talking about earlier that needed to be addressed?
Yes. And there hasn't been a survey to know whether the road's on the easement.
Okay.
There is an easement there for a road, but whether it's in the right place-
Whether it's actually in the right place or not, so.
Trent, is there buffer yard requirements between R3 and R1?
Typically, there is, but PD, you know, I, I'm not sure how the final, final plan. That, that twenty-foot easement there, I, once the study's done, then we'll kind of know more of where them trees are there, too, you know, that you were talking about, councilman. So I'm not sure the distance and all that. Because they do, I believe, I'm not going to speak for the, the Zella Incorporated, but they do want to keep a buffer yard up there, and they do want to keep those trees if they can, so.
The trees was part of what was promised by Mr. Springfield as a buffer, and he owned the property. He, he was the one planted them. And, but when the property changed hands, well, then, that, those promises kind of, you know, kind of go away unless it's pretty much written in stone, and it wasn't that way. So, but that was what Mr. Springfield presented at a hearing such as this many a year ago. Any other questions, O'Meara? Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay. Anyone else that wants to come forward and speak to this? Again, we'd ask you to state your name, address.
I signed in. The Andoverville, all three hundred South Twenty-Fifth Street. Has Zella purchased the property there?
No.
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 How large is that lot they're going to build on?
I don't know that I can answer that. Trent, do you have an idea?
It's difficult to look at something there and tell how many feet you have. And that, there was a, wrapped up there where it showed the building, the outlay of the building. Can you bring that one up again, please?
While she's bringing that up, Mayor and Council, together with both of those lots, there's Lot 12, Lot 13, close to eight acres on the two lots together.
Thank you, Trent.
And then, where is, they're going to put in road? You have to drive in there to the building. Are they coming off of Twenty-Fifth Street?
Right there.
Yes.
And it exits to, off of, onto Twenty-seventh Street?
No.
All ingress and egress is on Twenty-Fifth Street.
And another thing, there is a twenty-four inch water main.
Well, where? There's also, there's a twenty-foot easement that runs-
In that area.
Right.
Are they aware of that?
Certainly.
We want to make sure that we have at least twenty feet on each side of that water main, that there's no pavement and no, no building.
There's no building on, there's no building described on that, in that easement. Paving, perhaps paving, though. They can put paving on.
And then, is there some type of sanitary sewer down in that area?
Well, there certainly will be, if not, so.
There is neat, there is also a sanitary sewer.
There is one out there?
Yes, sir.
Because I noticed the city takes a truck down there and backs in and dumps their sewage in there. So that must be drained down in there somewhere, then.
Well, there's a sanitary sewer and a water easement that runs east and west on the north side of the south lot.
Yeah.
Where you see basically right there where the lines are very close to that.
And then, they're not going to build right there in that bottom. They're going to have to have a fill. How much fill do they intend to put in there?
Whatever's going to be required. I mean, I can't answer that for you. I don't think any of us sitting here right now can answer that for you.
It'll have to be at least three to three and a half foot of fill. And then, are they going to taper that off to the lots to the north of there where these houses are already built from forty-five, fifty years ago? What are we going to do with the water that accumulates?
All that'll be addressed in their grading and drainage plans that need to be proved prior to the final improvement of this plan development.
All right. See, years back, before Wal- Walmart built out there, Twenty-Fifth Street was draining down to the river. And of course, when they purchased the ground and they moved the road over to the side, they closed the ditch up. Either the water should be diverted east to the Corporation Gulch, or some way work it around to get it to the south, and there was no more drainage going south. All the drainage on the, behind Walmart to the south there. And who's going to stand the expense of widening the ditches and putting bigger culverts?
Again, all the drainage is addressed in the final drainage plan. They take that into consideration if that's necessary.
I see.
And again, I think that the statement that your city administrator, our city administrator's making there is that there is an approval of that drainage plan prior to moving forward. So please understand that that's exactly, you know, what this conversation has been, that, and we understand the drainage concerns. Believe me, we all understand that. I get it. It's in your backyard, and certainly you need to be here and voicing your concerns.
The reason, the city was going to provide me with a drain into the storm sewer, but I never did find out where the drain is at, so I just run it out into the field for the sump pump. It just drains out into, behind the house there. And of course, there's that drive, or that drive-through back there. Are they going to raise that also?
That's on that property? Is that what you're saying? The drive is on that property that belong, would belong to the-
Well, it's, it's actually that easement through there.
Are you, you're talking about the existing driveway that's going in there, sir?
Yeah, yeah.
That's on this property, obviously. There's an easement, we believe there's an easement that addresses that twenty-fourteen, that Dennis-
And are they going to raise that up also, or are they just going to leave that, the-
I don't know if they're going to raise that driveway. I don't know if Patrick knows that at this time. I-
Well, generally by code, the easement that is set aside, it will not belong to Zella. So therefore, that easement is generally to be left untouched. However, if any development were to impose any issues on that easement, then Zella should take responsibility, again, being certain that they don't cause any problems to neighbors.
I guess that's all of the questions, then. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Anyone else? This is a public hearing. Anyone else that may want to come forward and speak to, may have further questions? Okay. Sir, come on forward, if you will, for us, Patrick.
I just wanted to come back up again and repeat what Zella had stated at the planning board meeting. If any of the residents nearby have any questions specific, then Zella LLC can respond to any of those via email. They typically come into communities, and they improve communities. So, you know, they, they want to be there. At the planning board, we did ask that question, if anyone wants to talk to us. Since that time, no one's reached out. So we certainly would encourage people of the neighborhood, if they have additional questions beyond this meeting, to either reach out to myself or the people at Zella, and we'll address any concerns that you have, and hopefully give you more information that you're requesting. We have no issue in doing that.
Very good. I appreciate that.
Do you want to provide that email address right now?
Sure, I can, I can do that. You can contact me at Pete Morgan. Correct. At Slaggy, that's S, S in Scott, L-A-G-G-I-E dot com. So it should read P. Morgan at Slaggy dot com.
Okay. I appreciate that very much, and certainly that will be in the city offices. If any of our citizens want to call and, and ask for it, we will make it available to you as well. So. Anyone else that wants to come forward and speak? If not, then where are we here? We're going to close the public hearing, and we'll look for ordinance number the, planning commission report.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on September ninth, 2015, at the request of Zella LLC to consider amending the city's comp plan from open space to single-family residential and single-family residential to multiple-family residential in the three to four hundred block on the west side of South Twenty-Fifth Street. Planning Commission recommended approval on the amendment on a seven to zero vote. And then, next one is-
Yep, switching to-
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on September ninth to consider a zoning change from R1 to R3 at 306 South Twenty-Fifth Street, and recommended approval of the request on a seven to zero vote. And one more.
Yep.
The Planning Commission held a public hearing on September ninth to consider a zone change from R1, single-family, to R3, multiple-family, at 404 South Twenty-Fifth Street, and recommends approval of the request on a seven to zero vote.
Okay, so we've had a planning report on all three of the public hearings that we opened, and we'll move forward then and look for consideration of ordinance number 5366, which would be amending the present comprehensive plan in the three to four hundred block of South Twenty-Fifth Street from open space and single-family residential to multiple-family residential. Do we have a short title on this, Beth?
Yeah, all right.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
The ordinance, correct?
It is.
I'm sorry.
I've moved consideration of ordinance 5366.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion with the second, and we do have a short title.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the future land use map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and providing for publication of this ordinance in PAMA form.
Please vote. Please vote.
Voting in favor of the ordinance on first reading, council members Langy, Merrill, Moaning, Faust, File. Voting against the ordinance, Councilman Clausen, motion carries.
Okay, and next then, we are looking for consideration of ordinance number 5367, approving the zone change from R1, single-family, to R3 at 306 South 25th Street at the request of Zella LLC.
Your Honor, I'd move consideration of ordinance number 5367.
Second.
Motion with a second to approve ordinance 5367, if no further discussion. Short one. I'm sorry, go. Yep.
I guess when I, when I look at this and I, I see how this is developing along down through there and wanting to see that area develop on out, it's in what, limited amount of planning time I've had when I, when I was in school, and then through the planning commission and stuff like that, this is a good transition for that area. It goes from commercial to multifamily, and then sizes on down into the R1 and creates the buffers and everything else. I forget your name.
Val.
Val. You know, I, I think, you know, she would probably back up a lot of the things that I'm noting that, but that's, that's how you want those things to happen, so. I think history has shown that R1 is not going to go out to the highway out there. I mean, because of the noise situations and the complexity of the site development, i.e. some of the water problems and the situations like that, are not conducive to somebody that's going to, you know, fill it up with R1 homes because you can't get enough money back out of them. Whereas in an R3 higher-density situation, you can, you can make those improvements and correct those negative things for the site just because of the density that you can develop there, so.
Good point, councilman, I appreciate that.
Good comments. Valerie, as our new city planner, would you like to offer your analysis of this transition?
Yes, I would agree with what he said in just the transition between zonings in commercial to multifamily to single-family. That's generally how planning wants to work, just so that you have those buffers, so that you're not R1 next to, you know, a large commercial or industrial or anything like that. The multifamily gives you a little bit of buffer area there. And plus, sometimes you think too, the, the large 275 traffic and that, that noise that they were talking about, many times the, the large buildings of a multifamily is going to diminish what comes through into the R1 also, so it's, it's a bit of a block of that noise.
Val, thank you.
I guess, you know, if I was the only no vote, I better explain myself here. The, the reason behind that is it's not so much what you're trying to put in there. I'm full aware of that, it's a great area for R3, it really makes a great transition out of R1. It's just the water issue, I've heard about it since I was this tall in that area that there is, and Mr. Hughes brought up some points that they've talked about 30 years ago, so I just want to make sure that we don't, you know, push by those points and, because it'd be, I mean, we could, we could have it drained properly. I don't think that's the issue, I think the issue's underground now with water sitting there. And as always explained to me, it's like a sponge, you put something in the middle of a sponge and push pressure down, it pushes up. So that's where, you know, there's the concern for those residents in that area of going in that area, and I know that that's, it's been that way from 18th over, 18th Street moving that way. So it's not like it's some, we just kind of push it down the road. We push the water one way, we push the water one way, so we're kind of getting to the point where we're at the end of where we've been pushing it. So we need to kind of figure out, we're going to have to look at it. It's just going to be, it's going to be, with the property bought, it's something that's going to, that came along with it, you know, I mean, just down the ways from there, we did, built some homes in the area in there and had, had to deal with that. You know, we had to deal with water and the water coming up like that, just because of where we were at, so. I think it's something we've got to seriously consider, so these guys don't have issues in their back, in their basements, because they are sitting low, and you're going to be building up high, and I don't know how that all works out, I'm not an engineer, so, but anyway.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? If not, then are we ready for a short title, Beth?
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend the zoning district map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, provide when the ordinance is in full force and effect and publication of the ordinance in pamphlet form.
Wait a minute, are we on the right one here, zoning?
5367.
67, okay, very good. With that, please vote.
Voting in favor of the ordinance, council members Langy, Merrill, Moaning, Faust, File. Voting against the ordinance, Councilman Clausen, motion carries.
Okay, and last but not least here, what do we add?
You're on number 23.
We did 20, we did. Yeah, 24, okay. So we need consideration of resolution 2015 dash 30, approving the preliminary plan development at 306 South 25th Street at the request of Zella LLC.
Your Honor, I would offer resolution 2015 dash 30 for consideration.
Second.
Okay, a motion with a second. We have two, nothing further on this, Beth, or do we have?
We do have a planning commission report as well.
Do we? I'm, I'm not sure we do, do we? Okay, all right, so with that, we're ready to vote.
Council members voting in favor of resolution 2015 dash 30, Langy, Merrill, Moaning, Faust, File. Voting against the resolution, Councilman Clausen. Resolution 20 dash 15, 2015 dash 30 is adopted.
Did I mess this up, though? Because actually, we, we had the public hearing on 25, so I should be looking at consideration 5368. Are we okay, 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 so.
25 is for the south lot.
Gotcha, so, which we, which was open on the public hearing, so I kind of jumped, okay. Very good, so we're looking at consideration of ordinance 5368, approving the zone change from R1 to R3 at the 404 South 25th Street at the request of Zella.
Your Honor, I would do this ordinance 5368 on first reading.
All right, we have a motion with a second, short title on this, Beth?
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the City of Norfolk, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force effect and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
And with that, please vote.
Voting in favor of the ordinance, council members Langy, Merrill, Moaning, Faust, File. Voting against the ordinance, Councilman Clausen. Ordinance 5368 carries on first reading.
Okay. Now we're going to move forward to consideration of a resolution 2015 dash 31, approving the preliminary plan development at 404 South 25th Street at the request of Zella LLC.
Your Honor, I'd move consideration of resolution number 2015 dash 31.
Second.
Any discussion?
Other than, as you know, I've always been a proponent of plan developments, whenever and wherever we can get them, I think it, with, with what we passed earlier this evening, it even gives more ability to control what's going on there, to work with the developers, also provide assurances for the people in the area and give us the best bang for our buck all the way around. More plan developments I could see, the happier I'd be.
I think I learned that working with you on the planning commission, Councilman Langy, so. Any other comments? Let's vote.
Voting in favor of resolution 2015 dash 31, council members Langy, Merrill, Moaning, Faust, File. Voting against the resolution, Councilmember Clausen. Resolution 2015 31 is adopted.
Okay, I think we've taken care of everything there, so let's move on to a public hearing to amend section 27 dash 198, 27 204, and 27 214 of the city code to change height regulations in zoning districts I1, I2, and I3. I'm going to open this public hearing and turn to our group over here to speak to this.
Mayor and Council, this is brought about to, in several areas of industrial zone I1, I2, I3, we have a height restriction of 45 feet, and for most industrial properties, anything that, where the EPA requires a, some type of stack for emissions, 45 feet, we can't touch it. I mean, the 45 feet don't even come close to, for, if, let's say, another ethanol plant or any of their stacks that they put up in air, they're going to be over 45 feet. In fact, many times their buildings are over 45 feet themselves, so even, I'm not sure how tall, like New Forest Building is or any of them, but they're, they're tall buildings, they're tall structures. And this is an, I think this has been our code for a long time. So, this gives a, an avenue for industrial zone properties to go above 45 feet. And obviously, we have to keep in mind of FAA regulations for any of the flight paths. We did in I1, in the light industrial, we do have some I1 in areas of town that I don't think you'd just want to give a full provision of, to go as high, as high as they would want. So, it gives an avenue for a conditional use permit at that time. If they want to be above 45 feet in I1, then they have to have a cut. And I think that that's a good provision, and it allows for the industrial side to grow without running into a 45-foot block unless FAA says that you can't be any higher, so.
Okay.
Any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Council, any questions for Trent? Okay. Looks like we should have a planning commission report on this, Beth?
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on September 9th, 2015, to consider amending sections 27 198, 27 204, and 27 214 to address the maximum height allowed in zoning districts I1, I2, and I3. The Planning Commission recommends approval of the amendment with a seven to zero vote.
Okay, and with that, I will close this hearing then, and I will look for consideration of ordinance number 5369, approving an amendment to sections 27 198, 204, and 214 in the city code to change the height regulations in zoning districts I1, I2, and I3.
Your Honor, I would offer for consideration ordinance number 5369.
Second, Your Honor.
Okay, we have a motion with a second, any further discussion at all? If not, Beth, one more time.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend sections 27 198, 27 204, and 27 214 of the official city code to change height regulations in zoning districts I1, I2, and I3, to provide when the ordinance shall be in full force and effect and to provide for publication of the ordinance in pamphlet form.
And with that, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5369 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I'd move that, we suspend the rules and pass ordinance 5369 on second and third as, it's just bringing us into more into where the standards are as today's industrial developments.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion with a second to suspend the rules and pass ordinance 5369 on second and third. Any further discussion at all? Then I would ask you to please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5369 carries on second and third.
Okay. Last but not least here, consideration of approval of a contract with Medallion Construction Company Incorporated for construction of the Norfolk Vehicle Storage Building to be built at the Public Works Maintenance Site on South 8th Street in the amount of $594,996.
Your Honor, I'd move consideration of the contract.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion with a second, any discussion needed on this?
I'd be happy to answer any questions, Mayor and Council has. This is the building we're built, we intend to build to replace Johnson Park's buildings.
Is that a pretty solid figure? Have we got everything in there we need so that there's no overruns on this, and we know that's a solid figure?
It's as solid as we possibly can from the engineering standpoint, you know, we hired JEO to help us out as we're required to do. They're the engineering firm that was selected for this project, and their recommendation is accept this low bid. This is a storage facility down there at, at the street apartment for the Parks and Street and Public Safety Building. Division are going to utilize that space, so it's a fairly straightforward building, councilman. So it should be fairly straightforward to build, I would think.
Thank you.
Are we still going to look at maybe possibly doing some of our own electrical plumbing when we can?
We're doing electrical.
Electrical work will be done by city staff, so that is not in that, that amount there. And then there's some fencing that will be done by the city under a separate contract once the building's done, but.
Thank you.
Good question, councilman, anything else?
Just so that you're not surprised, there is some potential fill that has to be removed and recompacted, depending on what we get. There's an old building there that, corner of it was filled, so there's a pricing for that if needed, so.
Okay. All right, if nothing further, I would ask that you vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Okay, we're to the point now where this is actually a public comment period, so if there's anyone that's here tonight that wants to come forward and address this council, I think it's you, Randy. Anyone at all? Okay, seeing none then, we are adjourned.